What is wrong with this picture?
We need to mention that so I can tell her where to go. Here, here's to all of my names. There's writing all the other spots.
Yeah.
Yes, we're good. We're ready.
Yeah.
You have the SIA group letter. I don't know. Bridge right there in front of you. That one, yeah. Okay. We were already okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the planning board meeting. And I'm going to do the call to order. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied by the placing of a notice at this meeting on the bulletin board at the municipal building filing the notice with the township clerk and transmitting the notice to the Hundredan County Democrat, the Courier-News, the Star-Lager, and Trenton Times, according to jurisdiction for all matters before this board tonight is proper.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bellardo. Roll call, please.
Mr. Edward Gettings. Vice Chair Donna Drews.
Here.
Ms. Robin Fatu. Here. Mr. Scott McDade.
Here.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Cavalcir.
Here.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Here.
Mr. James Miller.
Here.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is our minutes from our July 13, 2022 meeting. Any comments on the agenda? I mean, on the minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, roll call?
Vice Chairwoman Donna Drews.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, abstain.
Yep. Correct. Ms. Robin Fatu.
Abstain.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Cavalcir.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania. Yes. Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Yes.
You abstain. You weren't here, abstain.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' privilege. I'd like to invite anyone that's here in the audience or on with us virtually that would like to address anything that is not on the agenda this evening. Now's the time for you to come forward. All right, let's the record show no one has come forward. Next, we have a public hearing. The first item on the agenda under public hearing was SIA Group on behalf of Electrify America.
And if I may, Ms. Vice Chair, we have a letter dated September 28, 2022, from Julia Hahn of the law firm of Prime in Duval that represents SAI Group indicating that, quote, "This letter shall serve as a formal request that the application that was scheduled to be heard by the Raritan Township Planning Board on September 28, 2022 be carried to the November 9, 2022 meeting of the board," period, end quote. They would seek to do that without further notice in advertisement. I don't have any legal objections to that other than to note for the record that the time in which the board may act on this matter is automatically and agreed to be extended by the applicant as a condition of not noticing till November 10, 2022. So, Ms. Vice Chair, if the board wants to so carry without notice, then someone could make a motion.
Someone like to make some motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so if anyone was here for SAI either in person or by Zoom, that matter will be carried until November 9. You will not receive a further notice and it will not be advertised in the newspaper.
Thank you, counselor. Next on the agenda, we have Precious Gems Academy, a minor site plan approval for an expansion of childcare center, block 36, lot 50, at 433 Highway 202. Come forward. Generally, we set them up over there. That's okay.
Good evening, board. My name is Tom Ercolano. You are?
Just had you, I need you to use the mic, okay? Thank you. Just press the button until the green shows green. Okay, didn't let go. Is it green? Yes. Just talk as. Just test it out.
Testing, testing. Okay. My appearance is Tom Ercolano, E-R-C-O-L-A-N-O, Ercolano Law in Livingston, New Jersey, counsel for Precious Gems Academy as it relates to this present application before the board. With me, I do have the engineer, Mr. Manilio, who prepared and submitted the application documents on September 12 of 2022. And with me, I also have from Precious Gems, Raquel Gonzalez and Karen Colavito. First, as it relates to the application.
I'm going to swear all your witnesses in, counsel?
Okay.
So if they would all rise and raise their right hand at the same time? And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or otherwise affirm in connection with your testimony tonight?
I did.
You were all sworn. Mr. Ferrero, were you sworn at last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and our professionals were all previously sworn. They remain under oath, counsel.
Thank you very much. So first, I would like to call Mr. Manilio.
Good evening, board. Name is, legal name is Giovanni, G-I-O-V-A-N-N-I. Last name is Manilio, M-A-N-I-L-I-O, with Manterra Design, 62 Grove Street, Somerville, New Jersey. Licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. Have a bachelor's of science degree from Syracuse University, has been involved in engineering for the past 19 years. Have testified in front of numerous boards throughout the state and in front of this board probably seven years ago or so for Hyundai dealership down the street.
Counsel, we accept qualifications.
Thank you. Thank you.
So all placing on the deal is sheet two of the minor site plan that was submitted? I'm not sure if you want us to exhibit.
No, if it was the same that was submitted, you don't have to mark it as the exhibit.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Manilio, essentially defer to you to explain the contents of the application.
Yeah.
You have counsel. You have to speak louder. I've been accused of having an overly loud voice, but we're not picking you off.
Essentially, I said that I would defer to Mr. Manilio to please explain the contents of the application.
Sure, so it's a relatively simple application. So the property is located at 433 Route 202, otherwise known as Block 36, Lot 50, Zone B3, community commercial. Right now, it's, in the front is a building that contains a dental facility and some retail. And the rear facility is the existing Precious Gems Academy, which is a daycare facility. So a little history on this. The original approvals on the property actually occurred in 2001, which stemmed back from a previous approval from 1987 for two buildings, a retail building and an office building in the rear. Sometime in 2006, amended site plan application was submitted, approved by the board to change the use of the back building from an office building to daycare. The building got smaller, I believe the parking got reduced or was banked, and approvals were granted at that time. There was a waiver granted for the buffers from the existing property to the surrounding residential neighbors. And also, an approval was granted for the daycare for 31 parking spaces with 18 of them being banked or an additional 18 being banked. So for a total of 49 parking spaces. Original testimony was that there were going to be approximately 85 students in the facility, which is pretty consistent with what's there today. But the applicant could testify to that. I believe the correct number right now is 88 students. Additionally, in the testimony from 2006, there was testimony that pickup and drop-off will be scattered throughout the day, and that ranged from anywhere between 15 to 25 students being dropped off at any given time. The proposal tonight is to utilize one of the tenant spaces in the front of the retail building. It's the tenant space always to the east used to be the Sinorama. So they have moved out. That space is about 1,520 square feet. Precious Gems wanted to use that as almost like an auxiliary daycare for an additional about 20 students in there. In addition to changing that use, in order to utilize the facility that they have in the back with the playground and the check-in and checkout, we are proposing to put a crosswalk that comes out of the back door across the other side of the driveway and a sidewalk that runs along the whole perimeter parking area that brings you to the back building. This is slightly increased in previous coverage by about 0.8%. Still conforming fully with the code for previous coverage. As far as parking, so we did a calculation on the parking. So what was existing based on the Sinorama onsite, 80 parking spaces were required. And given the new change in use with 20 students, it increases the parking requirement by two. So it goes from 80 required parking spaces to 82 required parking spaces. On-site right now, there are 76 parking spaces that are fully usable. And again, there's an additional 18 that could be utilized if, for some reason, there's not enough parking on the site. So in total, there's possibly for 94 parking spaces. Also, in the previous resolution, there was a item in there that stated that if the parking was needed, that it could be done administratively, and that there was some type of method in there that that could facilitate that. The only additional thing I just want to put on the record is we also looked at the ITE Parking Generation, the fifth manual. So what they do is they have studies that they do across the entire country. And for this specific use as a daycare, and it come with an 85th percentile. So they figure out how many parking spaces are needed based on other similar uses, and they base it on number of spaces per thousand square feet. So what the ITE has in their requirements is 3.74 spaces per thousand square feet of daycare. If you take the area of daycare, including the proposal, we actually only need about 23 spaces. If used the township's regulation, you actually need 45 spaces. So there's a 22 space differential there. So we're pretty safe to say that there's enough parking on the site. And obviously, if there's not enough parking, we do have an additional 18 parking spaces that could be utilized. That's pretty much the application in whole. And I'll go through the letter, too. I guess I could handle some of the items from Council Planners Letter dated 7/24/22.
Is that, did you mean 9/24/22?
I'm sorry, 9/24.
Yes, you can grab my copy. Absolutely. You're welcome.
All right, so I'll skip some of the items that are operations, and I'll let the applicant testify to those. Number two, as far as architectural plans, shown in northern portion of the building being as the entrance to the facility. That is correct. That's going to be the main entrance and exit for students and employees. Right? Yep. So there's going to be no signage. And I was told that operation-wise, all students are still going to be dropped off to the main building, just because if there's one central location for pickup and drop-off and for safety reasons. So the only people that are going to be walking into the building are employees with the children and walking them back out. Other than that, yeah, there's no signs proposed on the building or directional.
So can you just explain, so the children are being dropped off at the main entrance to the building in the rear. They're going to walk up the sidewalk that's being proposed to the back of the building where the rear, where a rear entrance exists now.
Correct.
Where, what, what is, isn't there any kind of safety concerns with all of that electrical equipment surrounding that? There's all kinds of electrical equipment and boxes right near that rear door, if you will, at the back of the building.
No, again, they're all going to be chaperones. It's not like this is going to go by themselves. So I don't see anything.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is just a statement of fact regarding previous coverage. Same thing with number five, it's a statement of fact regarding sidewalks and appliance. Item number six, RTMUA approval shall be discussed further as it is regulated to an extra 20 students. Yeah, so the anticipation is that that building would have 20 students in it. We did calculations submitted to RTMUA showing that the increase in gallons per day is about 48 gallons per day, and they approved that as they have capacity for it. Obviously, if that changes, then we'll resubmit to RTMUA for initial supercapacity.
Excuse me, do you have something in writing that indicates their approval?
Yes, we have a approval dated 9/20/22. Number seven, I believe we provide testimony regarding parking. Number eight, again, I'm going off memory, but I think the applicant verified the number of students existing in the facilities, 88 proposed as an extra 20. Number nine, no new wall signage is proposed. Number 10, no directional sign is being proposed again since everything's going to the main building still. Number 11, I'll defer to the applicant, but I believe there's no new sign going on to the new pylon, or the existing pylon sign where Sinorama was. And then, number 12, as far as the trailer parking, the trash enclosures, I'm not sure what that is. I've been to the site twice, and I actually went on the way here and I didn't see it. So if the applicant might have some additional information regarding the trailer.
Could you just point out where the reserve parking? Because it doesn't show up as a notation on the.
It is, it's probably a very lightened gray. It's between the two parking states, two rows of parking. So I'm going to try to point to it, but I don't know if they're going to be able to see it. So
There are a row of double parking next to the building.
And then there's a long, I guess, grass island area in there. And that area is 18 parking spaces, nine on each side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you contemplating any changes to the exterior of the building? Windows, security doors, anything like that?
I actually don't know that answer, so I'm going to defer to the applicant and see what they have discussed with their architect on that.
Would you like me to ask that question of one of the owners present? Or would you like to have Mr. Manilio conclude his testimony first?
He can finish, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I would like at some point.
Absolutely.
Question.
Certainly.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do have, I do have a question. The interior alteration, I guess this is A-001. The block and lot is not the same that's on the application, and it references Flemington Borough as well. I think that needs to be noted. I think it's block 36, Lot 50.
That is correct. Yeah, we will let the architect know.
It says 749 on that architectural plan.
Okay.
It should be Flemington.
Raritan Township.
Yeah, Raritan Township.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nope, I think when I was out there, we still have a 36-inch clearance between the signpost and the retaining wall that's out there and score short distance. So I think that that would satisfy, it's not 88. It's a full route. So I think we're fine. But if the fire official or anybody else wants to move.
Madam Chair, I do have one question. I have to operate. For you, what is the distance for along the sidewalk?
The distance between two buildings, not between the sidewalk and the.
Well, maybe walking, when you leave the building and walk down the sidewalk, you have.
I might have to measure that. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions from the public or any people on Zoom?
No, there's no one on Zoom.
Okay. All right. Thank you, next expert.
Thank you, Mr. Manilio. And next, I will have Raquel Gonzalez. Can you please state your name for the record?
Raquel Gonzalez.
And in what relation are you to the Precious Gems Academy?
I'm one of the owners.
Are you familiar with the daily operations of Precious Gems?
Yes, I am.
I'm going to walk you through some of the questions raised in the September 24, 2022 letter as it relates to the daily operations of Precious Gems. In terms of the pickup and drop-off and this expansion, how will the expansion change, if at all, the pickup and drop-off that's currently in place?
It will not change anything. All parents that are dropping off, the kids will be dropping them off and picking them up in the main building.
And generally, what time does the drop-off occur?
Drop-off occurs between 6:30 a.m. and 9 a.m.
Is the drop-off staggered?
Yes. No, no parent is outside of the building more than a minute, not even. And parents have the option to drop off at 9 or any time between 6:30 and 9.
So is it correct that the parents do not enter the building with the children at this point?
That's correct. They just drop them at the door.
Now, as it relates to the intended use of the expansion, are there specific times of the day that Precious Gems will be utilizing the expansion?
Yes, the new facility will be used from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m.
And approximately how many students will be attending daycare in the expansion?
20.
And how many teachers would that require to also go with the students?
Two teachers.
At any point in time, would children be permitted to traverse the 260-foot sidewalk alone?
No.
And what measures are in place to ensure that?
A staff member has to be, or any child has to be accompanied by a staff member outside of the premises.
And presently, how many students are enrolled in the existing daycare center?
We have 84 students enrolled, but on an average, we have about 70 students. We have students that have part-time schedules, meaning some students come three times a week, four times a week, or five times a week. So on an daily average, we have about 70.
And how many students, how many students would be attending the expansion?
The new building?
Yes.
About 20. But, sorry, enrolled 20, but in about, on an average, would be 12.
Thank you. As it relates to the exterior aspects of the building, does Precious Gems intend to add any additional signage to the facade of the building?
No.
Or any additional signs to the pylon signs on the road?
No.
Does Precious Gems intend to make any cosmetic changes to the facade of the building?
No.
As it relates to a trailer that was parked near the property, is that still there?
No.
And what was that?
A trailer dumpster that we had. We had it there just for about a week. We were dumping extra furniture and equipment that we had in our attic and basement. It was picked up two days ago.
Okay. I don't have any further questions at this time.
Members of the board?
I do. So how will the, there's an existing front entrance to that retail space right now? How will that be utilized or will it not be utilized?
It'll just be used as an emergency door.
Okay, and then will that be identified in any way?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question, it looks like from the architectural plans, there's two classrooms being proposed in the new space. But you said there would only be two teachers, so is it one teacher for each class?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. What age do you anticipate?
Pre-K class, so from ages four to five.
Okay, so these are going to be the older kid you're going to walk over from.
The ratio for that group is actually 12 to one. So we're.
Okay.
We're in ratio.
I'm just wondering, I was wondering what age children you're going to be walking from one building to the other.
Four to five.
Okay.
Looking, looking at the plans, there are no windows in these classrooms? Is that correct?
The main, the, so there are windows in the front, but they're not open windows. You can't open them. They're just out to the, to the street. And then in the wall in between, the wall that will be dividing both classrooms, there will be a window made as well, two windows, if I'm not mistaken.
So there will be a change to the exterior of the building?
No, 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 no. There's a wall that will be put up in the location to divide, to make the two classrooms.
So there'll be a window between the two classrooms?
Correct.
There's no exterior ventilation?
No.
Or window?
No.
And with respect to the children walking, they will do that in the dead of winter and in the pouring rain. They will still have to walk from one building to another.
We would have to evaluate that in the sense of maybe having them dropped off at the back entrance that we wanted to make main entrance.
Okay, so there may in fact be times when children.
Coming wintertime, yeah.
Dropped off at that, at the new structure if it's approved.
Correct.
And I'm a little confused, forgive me. You say that there's no signage, but in the plans that you submitted, it shows a proposed new sign.
We didn't have any new signage, no. And they're, we never proposed any signage.
What sheet is that on? Where it says proposed striped crosswalk and proposed new sign.
Yeah, R1B. I forgot the number is on it, but it's the detail. The detail actually in the lower left corner of the corner.
And we unfortunately don't have a report from the fire marshal, so I don't know if he's looked at this, but are there any special fire safety installations on the interior that are required by a daycare center?
We spoke to the fire marshal, actually, and we just have to install two panels, one on each side of the building for voucher purposes, obviously. So that, we already have the proposed from a fire company that will be installing that.
Any other questions? Board members? Anything from professionals?
Can you walk me through probably the, how the student gets dropped off of your building?
Correct.
Okay, and they get to the.
Correct.
Do they, and there's 20 students. Are they all walking together?
Yes.
So you're going to have 20 students at the same time walking down the sidewalk?
Okay, so there's 20, there will be 20 children enrolled for that particular program. But like I said before, students have staggered schedules as well. Some kids come only three times, four times, or five times a week. So on a daily average, we will have about 12 to 15 children, not the full 20. I mean, there can be days.
You have 12 to 15.
Walking together with the two staff members. With the two staff members, correct.
And if they're being dropped off because of inclement weather?
We'll set up a plan that they will be dropped off towards the rear of the building.
I just want to make sure that there's adequate circulation and parking. When the, when the parents drop the children off now, they park their car and walk their child?
Yes.
And so the same thing would happen here.
Correct.
And how do they know to go to that, this building instead of the other?
Well, we would have, well, a lot of our parents already know about that. I mean, we can, I don't foresee us needing a signage for that. As if we, if this is approved, parents will have started drop offs at our main building would know that the classrooms are up there.
Right, but how do they know that the weather is bad enough that they're supposed to drop them off at the front door?
We would send a communication out to our families about that.
May I ask a question? Does your facility use an automated messaging system via email or text message?
Yep, we have a system that's in place that sends out emails, text messages, and phone calls automatic. If there is inclement weather, we would use that system that particular morning for the parents to get notified.
And do the students in the preschool go back to the player where you left?
Wanted to.
Any other questions?
So actually, yeah, so a lot of parents actually like our facility due to the fact that we are not directly in front of the highway, that we are secluded for safety purposes. And for that same reason, we do not want to add signage towards the front for safety reasons that to not catch the public's eye that we are a school.
Is there presently any signage, though?
There is the main, the main sign that shows that Precious Gems is there, but we would not put anything directly toward the unit this week for that reason.
And to be clear, this, the sign that's presently there, it's not on the face of the building?
No.
But it's on the?
I don't know how you would call that.
I don't know, the sign on the road, I guess.
Yeah, that it's illuminated, yeah.
Okay.
Are you contemplating any kind of, I'm going to call it a fence, for lack of a better term, between the parking area and the sidewalk that these children are going to be walking on several times every day in good weather?
A fence?
So to try and minimize the danger of a park?
That was actually something we had talked.
Jumping up onto the sidewalk?
Yes. Yes, we, that is in our, in our plans, yes. We had talked about that before, actually.
So there's a fence between the sidewalk and the parking lot?
That was something that we wanted to add on to, yes.
That's not in here.
Okay, well, that was something that we spoke about. I know that for a fact.
I would assume the state of New Jersey has all kinds of guidelines and rules and regulations for daycare facilities for safety and things like that. I'm not an expert, but I'm assuming your plans are in complete performance with all of that?
Yeah, so we had already, our licenser from Department of Licensing and Children and Families, she came out, we explained the situation to her, we explained our plans as well. They did not require the sidewalk, actually, nor a fence. They just wanted it roped to indicate that there was a walk, a path from the front to the back. So when we sat down, we decided that, yeah, we would like an official sidewalk as well, the fencing. So our plan is much more than what they are expecting from us.
I think if the board was inclined to require a fence, that's something as part of the approval that could be subject to the approval of our professionals. If the board was so inclined, Mr. Ferrero and Mr. Vacarella could look at those plans and approve it as a condition of approval. Would that be acceptable to you gentlemen?
I think that would be fine. I would like a little bit of maybe guidance from the board and/or the applicant talking about a fence, talking about a chain link fence, a decorative fence, or something like a timber guide rail.
I would say, I don't know that, from, I look at it also from an operational perspective that you're trying to plow snow and maintain a sidewalk and everything. So I'm not sure we're looking for a very substantial fence. It's more of a delineation so that the kids don't wander off.
Right, and I think, I think the snow removal issue is a problem with your fence.
Yeah.
Split rail or something.
Well, either a split rail or a timber guide rail, something like that that's got rope.
Right.
Maybe the timber guide rail would be good for cars and things.
It has a little more.
Yeah.
Well, if the board votes in favor, you gentlemen will work with the applicant to decide what's appropriate, given the board's direction.
All right, any other questions? No. Any questions from any member of the public? Thank you. Counselor?
I have nothing further. Thank you very much.
Do you want to summarize your application, counsel, on the approvals? You're looking for the board to make a motion with respect to?
I'll defer to the paper submissions. I'll rest on that. Thank you.
All right. The applicant is before us today to seek?
Minor, I'll do it. Minor site plan approval for this particular application. You've heard the particular testimony. You've heard conditions, including that the fence or guide rail or timber that will be part of the approval if the board is so inclined. The applicant should also submit to the board secretary a copy of the RTMUA approval letter, so that's in the file. And that's essentially it.
And I believe there were some modifications to the plat, to correct the?
Yeah, Flemington Borough reference.
In the block and lot.
All right, any other discussion?
Offer a motion?
So moved.
All right, and that was a motion to approve.
Okay, and just for the benefit of the reporter, the move was by?
Lisa Fania.
And the second was?
James Miller.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Vice Chairwoman Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu?
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico?
No.
Ms. Michelle Cavill-Cair?
I'm going to, with the stipulations we put in, I'd say yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania? Yes. Mr. James Miller?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
All right, thank you, counsel. As soon as the transcript is provided to me, I will forthwith diligently prepare a resolution.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice trip home.
Thank you.
Just press and hold, it'll turn, it'll, it'll go off. Is it going off? Good, you're all set. Technology, isn't it great? You can see whenever you feel like it, like me. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, go ahead. The reporter for the next applicant needs a minute or two to set up.
Mr. Calana, where's your office?
Livingston.
A Livingston. Yes. You with a firm there?
Just me.
Oh, okay, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. So I'll send the transcript directly to you.
No, it goes to both the board secretary and myself.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I believe they're setting up. Our next item on the agenda is One Kings Court LLC. It's a request for an amended preliminary and final site plan approval for a warehouse. It's block 3603, lot 1201, with the address of One Kings Court.
Mr. Singer, I think you win the award for most witnesses are professionals with your interviews. We don't have one to give out tonight, but?
We bring the road show to you.
I'm telling you, we're impressed.
We've been practicing, we pulled up the tent, we parked it here.
There was that party buster.
Oh, that was it.
Yeah, I saw that party buster.
Exactly. Technology is great. I think we're ready to go.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Singer from the law firm of Porzio, Bromberg, and Newman, here on behalf of my client, One Kings Court LLC, seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan approval with respect to the property it owns located at One Kings Court in the South Park Business Center in Raritan. As part of this application, the applicant seeks to amend the previously approved application from 2006, which was submitted by then-owner Copaco, which was Resolution Number 29-2006, that approved application was for the construction of a single warehouse building with associated site improvements. Tonight, you will hear testimony on behalf of the applicant by our planner, engineer, landscape architect, and architect, explaining why the reconfirmation of the previously approved variances and waivers granted with the 2006 resolution of approval should be again granted, along with the minor changes that we'll be presenting tonight. At this time, if you'd like to swear in my?
Yeah, why don't you read the names of your witnesses, so the reporter can take that down in their position, and then I'll swear everybody in.
Sounds good. Today, we have Candace Davis as our engineer, Joe Vince as our planner, Jim Mizuko as our landscape architect, and Albert Albu as our architect. In case it's necessary, we also have Patrick McCran, principal of One Kings Court LLC.
Ms. Davis, I assume I see the 2006 resolution you represented, the prior owner? Okay, so you're familiar, that's good. All right, if all of you would, would stand and raise your right hand in connection with your testimony tonight, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or otherwise affirm? You're all sworn.
Thank you. We're going to start tonight with our engineer, Candace Davis. Ms. Davis, can you please tell the board your educational background?
Yeah, I'm representing the applicant.
Read in mic.
Hello?
That's good.
I graduated with a bachelor's degree from Rutgers in civil engineering, as well as a master's degree a number of years later. And I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey with a current valid license.
And Ms. Davis, how many boards have you appeared before?
I have appeared in front of a number of boards, specifically this board for a few projects, as well as Kingwood Township and Hunter County. I've also appeared in front of a number of boards in Morris County and Somerset County as well.
And you, at this time, I'd ask the board to accept Ms. Candace Davis as our engineering expert.
So accepted.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, can you briefly, briefly describe the history of the project to the board? 2006 approval?
The previous project was a proposed warehouse building on the existing site. The, there, at the time, there is, the existing site was two lots, and the previous owner had proposed a warehouse building flex space with parking facilities, as well as access from King's Court in two locations to accommodate the needs of the previous owner. At, I've shown on the, this exhibit, this is an exhibit from the previous submitted and approved plans for this site. It was entitled South Park Business Center. So I would enumerate this as Exhibit A.
A1.
A1. This was a proof plan that was previously, previously submitted and approved by this planning board, so it may be in the records already. But at the time, due to the environmental constraints of the sites, there is an existing stream that flows along this southern, or southern boundary. There were some constraints with regard to the site, citing of the building. So, and then there's also an existing conservation easement in this lower section here that had to be avoided for the entire site design. So in that effect, two driveway access were provided from King's Court with a retaining wall along the rear edge of the, of the site layout. And there were a number of variances that were required with this site plan that were approved by the planning board. At the time, the, due to the constraints, the building had to be, we were, had requested a front yard setback variance for the building. Let me see if I can zoom in. At the time, so we had been approved a front setback variance for, I have to. Adjust this a little bit. The previous setback variance was from the cul-de-sac, as well as along King's Court, as well as the front. And then, at the time, there was, the proposed building had a first floor and then also a second floor mezzanine. And that was also approved with previous approval. There, at the time, also, there were stormwater management features that were proposed. And all of these features and the, and the previous, of the previous approval have been maintained with the current proposed project. So I will now go to the currently proposed project. So I will now go to the currently proposed project. So this is considered, there is, again, as you can see from this plan, the layout is the same. The drive access is the same, the retaining walls along the south side have are the are the same. There is only a few minor requests that we are proposing with this current site plan. Specifically, the second story of the building shall was eliminated. So we are proposing just a single story for the building. The, as a result, the footprint has reduced some quite a bit and then also. The, but the front setback has been maintained. The circulation has been maintained for the project. The building has elongated slightly about 30 feet from the previous approval in this direction. So we are respectfully in front of the board for that minor change for the building. The, as well as a consideration, we are currently proposing a building with a specific height. Again, the previous approval allowed for up to 60 feet and four stories. At that time, that that building conformed and this building shall conform as well. The previous approval accounted for a number of parking spaces for that use and for that building. This current proposal, we are, we have been able to eliminate much of the parking, some of the parking. To accommodate the current current projected use for the current owner. In that regard, the impervious coverage for the entire site has been reduced by quite. Almost more than 20,000 square feet, which drastically provides a more significant and compact type of layout for the site. And while still conforming for parking count calculations as well as accommodating the impervious proposed impervious coverage with stormwater management features. If I, the previous approval, again, as I'd mentioned, there's a environmentally constraints area down in this lower area of the site. The Raritan Township ordinance as a section with regard to stream buffering and protections. Previous approval allowed for a variance from the proposed. Structure from the the stream bank at the time and we are currently propose accommodating that variance as well with the proposed building. And there is also a stipulation for disturbance within the stream. Distance from the stream corridor and we are conforming with that particular portion of the ordinance. The, if we go to specifically for the project, for this particular project, it's hard to see, can't see. So we are, the proposed project for the front building setback requirement for the building, again, we respectfully are confirming the previous. Approval, previous relief from the front setback, the front setback is required to be 100 feet. We are proposing 77 feet from the cul-de-sac and 80, 80. 87 feet from the front of Kings Court. We are conforming with the side setback requirement of 50 feet with the building. And we are conforming with the rear setback for the building as well, which is, we're proposing 144.5 feet, which is in this corner here. As I'd mentioned, we, there is the additional variance relief that's required from the. The stream bank. And we are. The previous approval allowed for less than the 100, 100 feet minimum and we are, we are. Our building layout complies with that particular variance relief. We are proposing in this case 81.8 feet. We are. The, the entire, the project had, has been reconfirmed with D P for the locations of the wetland swale. The buffers, the right, at the riparian zone, as well as the flood plain for the site. We, those are current valid D P approvals, verifications of the site. We, the project also has been reviewed by the county planning board, the county soil conservation district. As well as the Raritan Township Municipal Utility Authority for sewer service. And those approvals are valid as of this time for this current project. The proposed parking. So this is exhibit. This is exhibit A2. This is the, I zoom in of, this is the current project. I use this orange line as an overlay of the previous building that was approved with this project. So as you can see, the building, our current building is a little bit length longer on this side, but it's been shifted over on this side. So it's approximately 30 feet longer on this side. However, all the rear portions of the building has changed from this staggered wall. Configuration to more restraint, more marketable and more buildable building structure. And again, the previously, this this orange layout also included a second floor mezzanine that no longer is being proposed at this time. If I go to. So we are, there is also a consideration for. With this proposed. Building. We are also respectfully requesting, okay, so, excuse me for a second. So this is, this is the layout for the parking, this is submitted sheet five of the site plan set. As you can see, we are proposing parking all along the front to accommodate the building as was previously approved by the planning board in 2006. There was, there's additional parking here on the side that also is being accommodated. Is a requirement with this building, we fully comply with the parking requirements. With this building, the calculation conservatively estimated calculated to 41 spaces, we are proposing 66 at this time. The previous approval allowed for a second, a whole second row of parking along this side of this aisle that has now been eliminated. As well as some of this parking was considered reserved at that time and now we are proposing it as paved parking spaces. The, the loading docks and the overall circulation of the project has maintained, has been maintained with this amendment. So if you, okay, so the other feature, this is the previous approval exhibit A1. As you can see here, well, it's kind of difficult, let me zoom in here. There was, with this layout, there is two underground detention basins that accommodated the stormwater features for the. For the proposed building and and drive area and parking area. That those features shall have been maintained with this current project. And have been accommodated, well, updated for the the change in the impervious coverage since it's been reduced. As well as. The manufactured, the water quality system that was proposed previously has changed due to marketability of current times and also availability of new technologies. So we've proposed a different feature for that particular item of stormwater. At the time, due to the constraints of the sites, again, this is the previous approval. There were concerns, considerations for the existing soils at the site. They, so as a result, we had. Been granted a mitigation from the groundwater recharge requirements for stormwater as well as for non-point source strategies for stormwater. As mitigation for really from those two items. We had had proposed a reforestation area within the conservation easement in the lower area here. That particular portion of approval shall be maintained with this current project. The soils have not changed since that time, so again, those particular variance requirements, we are, we are maintaining. The, some additional items that, due to. The current owner proceeding with resolution compliance for the previous projects, we are now in front of the board. For review of the updated or amended site plan as a result of that, that particular submittal. We had received some feedback back from the professionals from Raritan with regard to additional relief that was required. For features that have previously been presented on the site plan, but now are interpreted as foreign variance relief. One of those features is, zoom in here on zoning sheet is, what do, are these underground. New Jersey American Water Vaults, they are, we are respectfully asking for a front yard setback variances for these items. In response to the current review of the project. These are required items inherent with all, with the water supply that would serve this building. They are underground features. And they're consists of concrete, basically concrete vaults and pits. This has been reviewed by the New Jersey American for conditional approval for the, for the site. An additional variance request that we respectfully. Came about according to review, current review relates to the proposed underground stormwater system in the front. Which is in front of the proposed building. It is underground, however, we respectfully requesting consideration for the stormwater system in the front of the, in the front yard.
Could you repeat that again, please?
For the, we're respectfully requesting consideration for the underground stormwater system. That is in front of the proposed building. So we are requesting a front yard setback variance for that. Additionally, with the current projects. The retaining wall, there is a retaining wall that goes all along the rear of the site. This in effect, since it's a sloping site, it allows for a flat construction and serviceable area for the, for the building as well as for access. Around the building. The retaining wall therefore will act as a site project requirement. It was previously presented with the, the previous site plan. We are maintaining that particular feature. In this case. There is a, the retaining wall goes entirely around the rear of the building and it also. Has a safety fence that's installed above. I will pull up the typical schematic detail for that. That was. Submitted on sheet. 19. Of the, of the, of the submitted site plans. So that retaining wall typically, and this is in the cross-section of the retaining wall with the safety fence that we're. Proposed a maximum of six feet, but it's inherent with the height of the retaining wall. Retaining wall varies from nine and a half to two or one foot as it tapers on towards the front of the site. So we are proposing a, the retaining wall, the the safety fence. As part of the previous approval, due to the mitigation that was requested for stormwater. The previous board had opted, opined for our site plan to change so that we could accommodate a nine-foot swell. So we did, we are preserving that proposed feature for the site. So in effect, the pavement levels here and the soil will operate such that runoff will flow off the pavement in the rear of the site. Flow into the swell and provide additional water quality and non-point sort of strategies for runoff from the site. And then will eventually filter out and go into the detention basins that are proposed. This is, so this feature, this nine-foot swell with the chain link fence and the retaining wall was considered a feature that we would. Require variance relief from in the front of the bill, of the site. Since it expanded, reaches all the way through to this area here and also on this other end. Over here, so we respectfully, due to current review of the project. They are, we respectfully request variance relief for the front setback for those particular, for that portion of the project. For the retaining wall, the fence with the swell. As. The, additionally, the. See, the, the safety fence as with the retaining wall feature, if you look at this again. The current review of the site plan. Came back with, the professionals came back with the requirement that this now is considered a interpretative offense for the project. It was previously presented and considered with the, in 2006, but at this time, the, the consideration is that this is now applied to the fence. So we respectfully request variance from the height of, the max height of the retaining wall plus the chain link fence which exceeds. Your ordinance requirement of eight feet. So that also is an additional item that we are respectfully in front of the board for your consideration. The. Final consideration is relates to the steep slopes on the sites. The existing conditions of the site have not changed. Since 2000, since the previous approval or the previous site layout. This is the existing site, it's currently vacant and has been vacant since that time. The steep slope areas is strictly in this area here for your ordinance. This qualifies as a steep slope that is regulated by your ordinance sections. As you can see, this, this area has been, in our opinion, created as a man-made steep slope area due to the previous construction of Kings Court. This is a sloping site, whereas there's, as I'd mentioned, the stream, Bushville. Stream cuts through here, so at the time of the construction of the roadways, it is our consideration. it is our consideration that these steep slopes were created due to provide a, the construction availability for the cul-de-sac at the end of Kingsport. However, in the current consideration of the site, this is, this area is now regulated. We had previously presented, the previous approval had presented this deep slope area as fairly similar and same, same hatching. At that time, the calculation was, was determined as a weighted average due to the calculation requirements of your ordinance. And it complies in that regard, which in, again, it applies only to hard surface coverage rather than disturbance. However, currently, we're respectfully asking for a variance from, excuse me, a variance from disturbance, hard surface disturbance that exceeds the allowed consideration of this area, specifically for, you know, the steep slope categories. And that is shown on. And those are the, that's the, the review of the project. And that was, that was the, the, there were some reviews that were performed by the township engineer as part of a resolution compliance effort. And we had received a number of comments back from Mr. Hajar at the time. This was dated in March 2021. We had responded at that time with specific, addressed certain comments. One of the comments that did came up at that time was specifically a, does, some of these items that we're respectfully asking for relief from today as a current interpretation, as well as there was a consideration for the stormwater pipes that was necessary to provide RCP. We are respectfully asking for a design consideration waiver from RCP piping due to the underground detention basins. They are, they are being proposed as HDB type pipes and your ordinance requires RCP.
At this time, Ms. Davis, I want to draw your attention to the memo from the township planner dated September 27, 2022. I want you to focus on those comments that have not already been addressed in your prior testimony.
Most specifically, we are, with, with regard to item number five, I believe, was an additional variance consideration that's current with the current review. We, the proposed safety gate in the rear of the building, of the rear of the site is actually 10 feet wide and that is to accommodate this area here in the rear of the building.
Ms. Davis, I wanted to clarify, it is not proposed to be 10 feet high?
No, it is not. This is, this is the proposed gate here. The gate, the gate will, will be the same as what the proposed safety fence, same height. So that will not exceed eight. The, there, with this proposed site plan, we are showing a typical ground entrance sign, which is customary for a proposed commercial project and was fairly considered for this site. The tip, a typical detail was presented on, excuse me, was presented on sheet 19. Sheet 17. And that particular typical sign conforms with the current ordinance for a sign, construction, as well as setback. So that is a feature that we are, was, was as part of the current site plan amendment.
I want to draw your attention back to comment one, where it has proposed 58,246 square foot warehouse. Comments as eight units, is it? But is that correct?
The, we, we have presented a typical division of the building into eight units, but that is a variable depending on tenant preference, as well as the owner's consideration with regard to marketability. The numbers for the, the calculation of the, of the parking, considered the, consider an overall warehousing space with each a typical eight units, possibly having some office space as well. So that is how the parking numbers came about as well. And then that accommodate is, will be accommodated with the building.
So it could be a variable number of units?
That's correct. If we go to.
Is that a max of eight, though? Eight is your maximum divisions or?
There's no real maximum. We put it there more as a visual to see what it could look like with eight. But in the original approval, you'll see it was just a broad warehouse. It's really, it's built, built per tenant.
So the original, the previously submitted, let me see, I have the architecturals for that as well. The previous approval showed this number of, showed this number of units. Again, it's really dependent on, and as, as a result, we, we presented a typical number of units similar, but these walls, it's dependent on tenant needs and ownership.
And use will be consistent with the order?
Yes, the use will be consistent with the ordinance requirements for the I-2 for a building, yes.
So the I-2 or where have it?
So we're looking at, we're looking at this building as a flex use with anticipated different types of tenants that, you know, may be, may be interested in multiple areas of this, of the building. At this time, it is considered, we are proposing like a flex warehousing building. The.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to our planner. If, Joe, if you want to.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we wait? That seems to be a use question we'll get to when the planner comes up.
So the. If we refer back to the planning, planner's review, as I had mentioned, item number eight with regard to steep slopes in, based on this particular consideration, that is where the, we're requesting some disturbance of the steep slope areas in this area here for the, for the project. Again, the project's layout has not changed since the previous approval. However, due to the detailing of looking at the calculations, it's on sheet seven of the submitted plans. The weighted average of the hard surface coverage complies with the ordinance. However, we respectfully ask for the proposed surface coverage within the steep slope area of 13 to 19%, which was that hatched area. And it, is this hatch area here in the corner. Again, the entire layout of the site, the building layout, location, the location of all the features is replicated from the previous approval of the site plan. If I, if I continue through some of the items that was brought up by the planning review, with regard to the, the number of items at the, at the, at the end of the comments are, are, we respectfully request, those, those shall be provided as a condition of approval as necessary.
Can you speak to question number nine, where it says, you talked about the variance needed, but is there buffering proposed?
The, the exist, the proposed building, that is, in that location, what we're asking for is underground detention basin for the set, front setback. We're asking for variance from the below grade of New Jersey American vaults in the front.
I thought I was referring to the retaining walls coming around and.
The retaining wall, again, while there is landscaping proposed, so submitted with the site plans. I can bring that up as well. We do have our landscape architect here as well. Okay, so your concern, got that. So the retaining wall will expands to the front area here. And so as you can see, there are existing plants, mature trees there. However, also on proposing landscaping in that, in this corner here, so that it's, it's in front, it's between the roads, roadway and the wall. And then also in this, on the other side of the site over here, there's also landscaping proposed as well. So the way that the site, just for an understanding, the way that the site with the topo, topography, the building is, and is actually lower in elevation than the roadway. So the driver, the vehicles will come into this access here and then start going downhill. Is same on this end. The cul-de-sac, you, come, your, this driveway is downhill. So this is a low area here of the proposed design, as well as in the front is a lower, at a lower elevation than the roadway. So that in effect also provides a, a type of barrier with regard to the use of the site and, and the viewing from Kingsport. There are also existing street trees along Kingsport that will be maintained with the proposed construction.
There any, actually, let's move on to the engineers. Dated September 1, 2021, from Mr. Tony Hajar.
Twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
You're talking about the March 26, 2021?
There is a September 1, 2021 memo.
Anyone have that?
No, no.
No.
No, not included in this wonderful large.
It is titled memorandum, resolution compliance review number two.
Maybe we take a break, have copies made for the board?
Sure.
And I'll also confer with you, Mr. Vacarella and your planner regarding that evaluation while that's being done, if permitted.
All right. Ten minute break?
Thank you.
All right, I think we are back.
Thank you, thank you. All right, the professionals had the opportunity to confer during the break regarding the use question that was raised by Mr. Vacarella. And I think we've come to some resolution because council's going to make certain representations that will be binding if this application is eventually approved by the board as to the use. So council?
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to turn it back over to Candace to make the representation on behalf of the applicant.
On behalf of the applicant, regarding the all the planning planners, you used my random item, item one. We're respectfully requesting a site plan amendment. Considered use of the warehouse building. I would think we sit at a whole office, given the permitted.
And in making this representation, Ms. Davis, you had the opportunity to confer before we came back on with your client?
Yeah.
And what client did you confer with? And he indicated and affirmed your representation is accurate, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So again, it's going to be warehouse with the normal associated office use. And if the applicant at some time wishes to seek a different use, a flex use or something that's not permitted, the applicant reserves the right to go before the zoning board of adjustment with that particular tenant or use. Okay, so let's continue.
Thank you. Does everyone have the September 1 memo from the former township engineer?
We do now.
Okay. Great. What I want to do is go back to Ms. Davis to, again, not repeat anything in prior testimony, but just to address anything in the September 1, 2021 memo that has not been addressed.
Mr. Singer, if I could interrupt you?
Sure.
Because I looked at that memo, this is the first time I've seen it. And basically it says, the plans are substantially changed coming for an amended site. That, that's what this memo says. It doesn't say any of the items from the March 26, 2021. Resolution, resolution compliance letter was, were addressed.
Right, well, I'm going to have, I'm going to have Ms. Davis comment on both letters.
Now, do we have the March letter?
You should, yes.
I had that.
You have. Unfortunately, I think the issue is because of the separation of time and we've had a number of new board secretaries, I'm not sure that was transmitted.
I have that as well.
Okay. Well, yeah, well, John just recently issued a new one, right? Sure, why don't we do that when copies of the March 2021 are made? And that, just for the record, was the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty two memorandum from Mr. Thomas, correct?
That's correct. So with regards to item number one. Reforestation consideration for the project, again, within the rear of the air of the site. There's an existing property easement that was established at the rear of the site at the time of the creation of the lot. And that's preserved within that area. We are mitigating the stormwater, the stormwater management waivers that we produce with our brand of people from with a reforestation area in the rear of the site. And in that we have an understanding that feel that the existing vegetation that is currently out on site has grown up since two thousand six.
I I think what you'll have to do is you'll it'll be subject to Mr. Thomas's approval in accordance with his report, so I don't know if supplementing is the word that will work, but work with the applicant if this is approved, and what comments do you have, Mr. Thomas?
I would say that I think part of the reforestation has to do with the stormwater management aspect of part of those. And part of what was going on is we were eliminating some invasive species and so forth, that's part of reforestation. And what's happened over this long period of time, forests, we have is a lot of invasive vegetation. So reforestation entails both removal of the undesirable vegetation and planting. So I think the reforestation requirement will essentially stay the same, it's part of the.
Correct, and and I know our landscape architect who is here tonight has reached out and spoken with Mr. Thomas, and I know they will work together to comply with with towns looking for.
Right, and I think that original requirement was in paragraph thirty four of the two thousand six resolution, resolution twenty nine dash two thousand six, in which it indicated that, quote, Mr. Mizuko, the applicant's landscape architect consultant advised the board that shade trees would be planted in the parking area along the parameter. He indicated that he would be able to satisfy all Mr. Thomas's comments and was able to do so in the revised landscaping plan. The applicant's landscape architect agreed to reforest the wetlands buffer area, period, end quote, so it it it's not a new condition of the board, it's an old condition that's just we're requiring compliance with by working with Mr. Mr. Thomas.
Yep, Mr. Mizuka and Mr. Thomas are still the landscape engineers working together, landscape architects working together on this project.
Just had sixteen years pass. About the same professionals.
Same professionals.
We have an understanding of that, so the stormwater management O and M manual shall be provided as a condition of approval for a review by the town engineer. The stormwater mitigation area is also considered the reforestation area as we had just previously discussed. Again, this is a was a requirement of the previous approval for mitigation from stormwater as well as additional plant tanks. So we have, we're we're comply with that particular requirement. Number three, with regard to the NJDEP review. This project, as I had mentioned, has been reviewed and in depth for freshwater wetlands as well as for flood hazard area riparian zone that are current. That came about currently and verifications have been issued for both the wetlands and the flood hazard area. With regard to item number four, I believe that that was something.
Yeah, I'll I'll address that. Really, it's something that we, it's almost counterintuitive to what the board's requiring in terms of the safety fence. The, you know, for safety reasons, we don't want public walking through the site. That's one of the reasons we're putting a safety fence to begin with, because it it could be a danger, that's why we have retaining wall, that's why the safety fence is so high. That the board wanted it to be safe for the public, so by inviting them in as as question four, as as common four, it it actually would endanger the public in in our view and cause great liability to the applicant. So with that, we we would ask the board not to accept that recommendation for public safety reasons.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
I don't believe they meant through the fenced area off of your paved and, you know, developed property area, I believe it was along, it was more in reference to areas, say, towards the end of King's that circle or along like other areas of the property that aren't part of your warehouse but are on your lot. They were, that's what she they were referring to as maybe being able to provide access or at least leave it open for future access.
There is, there is a current, currently, there's easements that cross through the rear of the site. Besides the conservation easement that had been previously established with the subdivision. There's also stormwater easement that impedes this portion of the site as well. The sewer system has a sewer line has an easement that crosses the site in this area here. Based on my recent visit to the site, they do maintain those areas for their own for access for those agencies, however, you know, in effect, the reasoning for conservation easement truly, in this case, I would interpret as really preserving this whole area and for vegetation, for environmental considerations, plantings for full growth rather than providing it as a public access throughway. Greenways are available also on you just for preservation rather than for public access, so we respectfully do not consider this as a like a park facility, it's it's a fairly private site.
Yeah, it's it's a problematic property. I'm I'm wondering if maybe given the steep slopes and the and the streams, is there something that you think the environmental commission? Is there a middle ground? You think the trails might go up, you know, trails would come through there at some point, they might be along the roadway? Or you're not really sure what what the author thought?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily want to go there.
Yep. Yeah, it's some some properties I'd probably go to the mat on, but this one has a little bit of a problem. Because our, we do have some of our conservation easement language which allows for the maintenance and provision for for trails.
Yeah, we we were concerned of the safety, it's not an even, you know.
I think the area they were talking about would be back along that sanitary sewer easement if they were creating quarter to go to other parts and parcels in the township, that might be one area to do it, or along
Along the bypass.
On along the bypass road, so that it might be that a trail would go along through that corner of your property at the intersection, so it wouldn't be a large area, but there is no currently a conservation easement there, and there would be site triangles and lots of issues, so.
We cannot make any representations on this portion of the site because it's NJDOT owned.
Yep.
Understood.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
With regard to item number five from the environmental commission review, I respectfully request landscape architect to discuss that further.
Yeah, we'll bring up our landscape architect to discuss the memo for Mr. Thomas as well as number five later.
All right.
And number six is a drafting update, which I'll be up to. If we move to the engineers reviews, I understand everyone has a copy.
Yes, we now have the March twenty six, twenty twenty one review from Mr. Hajar, and the board also has, as previously noted, the September one, twenty twenty one review from Mr. Hajar.
So I will start with the September first, twenty twenty one review is the consideration of why we are in front of board at this time. What happened was, as I had mentioned, the current owner had submitted items for resolution compliance with the previous approval. There are conditions that had not been met, so we submitted to the township as well as to all the other outside agencies in twenty twenty and and twenty twenty one. So this final review by Mr. Hajar for September first, twenty twenty one is why we are in front of board at this time. The the previous review by Mr. Hajar was fairly technical and lengthy in manner. I can go through all the items or a select few to related to the current.
Why don't we assume since they're they're technical, you'll comply with them unless otherwise mentioned?
I believe that we had submitted, the our submittal items do comply with most all of the technical items that had been mentioned by Mr. Jar at the with the March twenty six review, to the exception of a number of, for example.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we do that, why don't we go through the, we'll assume that you either complied or will comply. And if there are any you wish to take exception to, let's go through those by number now.
Okay. So if I go through, as I had mentioned, we had gone through an extensive submittal process, so what you have in front of you is technically is relates to changes that were due to this review. One of the items that we we I have had conversations with, first item number nine, I have had conversations in the in twenty twenty one, I believe, with the township traffic engineer with regard to this particular item for fair share. We have not received a current review consideration in that regard.
Mr. Mr. Troutman is our traffic engineer.
That's correct.
You'll consult with him regarding number nine.
So it for this particular use for this particular site, we are we we respectfully request that fair share it on the record that the fair share does not apply to our site based on the previous subdivision that created the site and industrial in in this industrial subdivision as well as the supposed proposed use for the site currently.
I don't have an issue with that as long as Mr. Troutman reviews it and agrees. You'll have to get a letter from him indicating that he still concurs with that earlier two thousand six finding by the former traffic person.
Okay. With regard to I'm quickly going through to verify that we've updated the plans for many of these items. Let's, it seems like, yes, the the plans have been updated for most of the items. I just, I'm just verifying. For specifically item twenty six, we request design waiver from proposing all stormwater pipe on the site to be consist of RCP material. In standard.
Candace, can we roll back to item number twenty one?
Yes.
Because that's something that I know you and I discussed on the phone, the comment there is could be no outdoor pallet storage permitted, is that, is the applicant okay with that?
We have with regard to the ordinance for outdoor storage pallet, we were, we we asked for a timing on with regard to possible needs for pallet reserve area, so that the if a pallet does need to be removed from the site, that we do have some some timing to have that removed.
And the reason this is an issue is the board had before it was it last year, two years ago, we had it, we had River Road area, River Road area, we had an applicant that had a tremendous amount of outdoor pallets that were were stored, and it was becoming quite the aesthetic displeasure, so the board is specifically attuned that they don't want outdoor storage pallets being stacked up, so that's that's something that's not acceptable.
And that is, that is a, well, that is an understanding for the ordinance and with with regard to pallets, however, you know, it takes time for pallets to be removed. And so is there any consideration of timing as to how long stack of pallets may sit outside in the rear of this building?
Yeah, I I think what happened was they had an enclosure area that was designed where they could temporarily put pallets, the vice chair has just reminded me of that as a as a resolution, so you you can work with our engineer and planner on that if that's something that you desire on when it's approved.
So the intent is that we we don't want large quantities. You know, basically, there was a temporary or a short term storage area with some screening.
Like a trash enclosure for for pallets.
Yeah, kind of like that, yes. Yeah.
Right, I mean, we want some things, other, we we had, we had something where there was mountains of pallets, and and they were just keeping them back there, and it it just got completely out of control, and we don't want that situation to arise again.
Yeah, I think, and speaking with the applicant, that that's something we'll.
Yeah, that's not a big lift.
Does our ordinance date the timeframe?
Well, they they have to, as part of the resolution of approval, submit that or they can't start building.
Timeframe for storage. How long are they allowed to store?
Define what is storage, is storage three days, five days?
Correct. What is time?
That's not specified.
Correct.
I think it's more of a. They can't be outside playing there, period.
What I might suggest is that we come up with a reasonably sized area to have to be in there. If it's enclosed, we don't care if we're there for four and a half years, if you can't see it, but as soon as one goes outside because there's not enough space.
That's why you earn the big bucks in reviewing this stuff, Mr. Ferrero, so I'm sure you'll come up with a good solution.
Yeah, and that was part of what Ms. Davis was bringing up, there is no timeframe within the ordinance, so that's why she.
Yeah, they'll, we'll work that out with our professionals.
And I know, uh, Candace was on item number 26 for the, the ordinance as it relates to concrete pipe versus the HDPE. I understand what the ordinance says. Uh, it would be my recommendation that at least the, the pipe in the stormwater system, which is 42 to 54 inch diameter pipe, which is a very large pipe, that be permitted to be the HDPE because it's incredibly difficult to deal with concrete pipe that magnitude. The collection pipe, which is generally 15 inch pipe, that, that could be concrete, but the, the, in the detention system, I have no issue with it.
And I also think part of our waiver request is supply chain issues with regard to, to certain kinds of piping. Um, so.
So just, Mr. Singer, when you, when you do your summation and you're, you know, talking about your variances and waivers, just for the record, make sure you bring this up again as a request.
To continue with the, um, the review, the March 26th review, uh, by Tony Hajar, uh, I believe that, um, the items, uh, can be complied with or we have at this time asked for the variance relief as, um, stipulated by, uh, yeah, with some of the comments.
And I will review the plans against this memo if it gets approved and as well as the stormwater comments.
Is there any, uh, further questions for this witness?
I have a question. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You go for it.
Um, you have the nine foot swell to collect your runoff, I understand, but in your snow removal?
Right here.
Yeah, snow disposal area, what, uh, what collects the water there to bring it into the detention basin and all the things collected when plowing and off of the streets?
So the version township ordinance requires that we provide a snow disposal area, uh, that came about, I understand, uh, due to, uh, excess of snow, uh, accumulation in certain areas. Um, so we've brought, proposed this area for, specifically for snow. Uh, so there are inlets at the end of these swales with rating that accommodates, um, the runoff from the, um, paved, paved surfaces here uh, to collect the runoff and then direct it to the stormwater system as designed.
Okay, so that area is designed to retain the water from going down into the creek?
Uh, no, this is not a retention type, uh, stormwater feature.
So, so it's not a curbed area?
No. It's, uh, you know, it's a slightly elevated, uh, level than the, um, the pavement surface. Uh, grass, it's gra, it consists of grass, though it's not a.
Oh, it's, it's not imper, okay.
No, it's not impervious. It's a grass area.
I'll ask the, our township engineer, do we want something that prevents that water from flowing down the embankment?
I, I, I don't necessarily think so because it's going to have to go someplace that would be going there anyway. And I, I can tell you that the, the general DEP, uh, guidance for large snowstorms is throw the.
I was more concerned with it, I, my point is I thought it should go to the detention basin and not down into the natural stream.
And that's, that's something that's accommodated with grading. Uh, it's a, you know, it's a, like I said, it's kind of a.
I mean, that'd be fine. I'm just saying, is it?
Relatively easy with grading by raising the far side of it and sloping it.
Right.
Uh, towards the end, it should be done with that.
We can accommodate that.
Thank you.
I guess, um, given the change of the back of the buildings, um, and the new project coming, uh, the, the buildings being deeper, could you just go over a little bit about the tractor trailer loading and maneuvering?
Yes, uh, we had submitted, uh, site plan. There was a circulation, uh, site plan sheet that we submitted, uh, sheet six. Make sure I have that here. And for so the question was with regard to circulation of, uh, of tractor trailer vehicles. We took a NJDOT template, uh, for a tractor trailer WB62, as you can see here. As, uh, for turning, uh, to consider turning radiuses on the site. So the vehicles will come off of, well, truly come off of Colony Road from this, from this direction here. Uh, if a, a typical trip, uh, from, uh, delivery or, uh, pickup, uh, would come through, uh, King's Court, uh, would enter the site in this location, uh, and then, uh, go downhill, uh, towards the rear areas where there are loading docks. Uh, these are four feet high raised, uh, concrete platforms, uh, that would access the tenant space. So there is also, um, there's, uh, available docks in the rear, uh, also with pedestrian, uh, access as well outdoors. And, um, then there's also, uh, additional consideration for the fire lane as required by the fire marshal. So there is also a one-way, uh, access beyond, uh, where the, where the tractor trailers would be, um, stits, um, parked, uh, throughout the entire site so that there's a full circulation of the, within the aisles and there's no impedances for the way that the site is laid out or the loading docks are laid out. Uh, you can see the little, uh, the, uh, you know, uh, schematic of truck trailers, uh, on the site and you can see that they, um, the, uh, the clearance that's available with the project. Uh, in the front is where, um, the standard vehicle, uh, parking would occur. Uh, also here on the sides as necessary, uh, to accommodate, uh, additional, uh, parking areas. Uh, the circulation includes a two-way, uh, parking, uh, access here in this location and a strictly a one-way parking access here. So in that regard, the safety of the, um, of the, uh, travelers on King's Court as well as within the site, uh, can be preserved due to, um, you know, the, the larger vehicles of a tractor trailer, uh, you know, they, they, then they will remain within this, uh, this route of circulation rather than, uh, back forth or any kind of, uh, you know, turning issues.
So then the, the additional length and width of the building didn't impede the circulation of the tractor trailers getting to the loading docks?
That's correct. The, uh, the circulation is maintained, has been maintained with this current, uh, site plan. Uh, that hasn't changed. The tractor trailers, when they come down onto the rear, they will pull, pull forward and then back in each dock. So there will be no, uh, K turns or any kind of, uh, significant difficult maneuvering within the site. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Anything else from our professionals for this applicant, Miss Expert? All right.
At this time, I'd like to call our, um, planner, Mr. Joe. Mr. Vince, can you please tell the board your educational background and licenses you hold?
Sure, I have a bachelor's science degree from Fairleigh Dickinson University, so I'm here in anthropology. I also have a bachelor's science degree from NJFP, land surveying. I've been practicing in the field of professional engineering, land surveying and planning since 2005, so it's seven years. I'm licensed in all three professions. All my licenses are current. I've been testifying before numerous boards around the state in, uh, all three fields. And I also represent several boards throughout the, uh, Bergen County.
I'd like to request the board to accept, uh, Mr. Vince as our planning expert.
I'm so agreed.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Vince, uh, can you please tell us, um, why these variances and waivers should be granted?
Sure, so, um, several variants would be, that's been part of the application. This is a lot from you, uh, you don't hear that, uh, a lot more creative things related to the site and, uh, kind of come up actually back. There are a couple new ones as far as the, uh, new methods. So that's prepared exhibit, I'm trying to identify these variations.
Mark, this says, um, exhibit A3?
Yes, I think so.
That's correct.
I, I would just also note for the record that, that many of these variances, I'm assuming, Mr. Singer, were in a memo that you, you prepared that was submitted with the application, um.
In our narrative?
Yeah, in your, in your narrative, just, just for the record, it's a uh, four-page, uh, document that was submitted with the application. It's entitled amended preliminary and final major site plan application. It says narrative at the top and it says the following list, the requested variances, design and submittal item waivers. And it lists nine, and I think Ms. Davis went through all of those and now you have another waiver for the, uh, item 26.
The RTP.
The RTP, just to set the table for your planner's testimony, correct?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, good.
So I'm just using exhibit, I identify what the variants are and where they are for the site. So as, uh, I'm really close as I can to what you described, I did not clarify it, but, um, the zoning plan sheet, the sheet 422, uh, very valuable, it's a bill that's had a long, uh, reach. The, uh, plan is recorded with the application and it was left nearby on June 30th, when it was submitted. And I, I already, various areas, various variants are gone. And we, we have the public on the board. Green and blue. And the green, that represents variances that were previously granted. They were identified as part of the last application. And they were granted by the board and those haven't changed. So they're absolutely located all as a result of the uh, the areas in blue are features that were proposed and approved by this board, but at that time, it was never determined that a variance was actually required. And then throughout the resolution compliance process, uh, well, then the variances were suddenly, so those are in blue. And then the orange is, uh, those are variances that would be new variances as a result of the amended cycle. So those are the three. So to describe them, the green would be, there was a front yard setback variant proposed for this warehouse building. A setback of eighty-seven feet was approved. And, uh, there was also approval for having portion of the road, the swell, the wall within a hundred feet of the top of the street of the, uh, road that's on the south side of the property. So those haven't changed. Uh, in blue, the, the variances that we have, uh, planning that have not changed would be, uh, steep slope variance for the pavement area. That would be on the western lead driveway entrance off of Capeport. Um, we've been identified with a variance for accessory structures in front of the building. That would be, uh, retaining walls, uh, portion of whichever portions, uh, is from the building. That would be on the, the east and the west side of the building. A portion of the grass swell that was in the front yard setback. And the underground detention system. Um, also along the rear of the property, the retaining wall, uh, has a maximum height of nine feet and it has a six-foot fence as proposed on the top for safety. That hasn't changed, but, um, now we're being requested, uh, we're being required a variance for, uh, maximum fence height where only eight feet require. Uh, and the other one would be a detention basin within the front wall, underground detention. And the new variances that would be triggered as part of this application would be, uh, because we were extending the building, um, approximately thirty-five feet to the east. Uh, that would require technically a new front yard setback variance because, uh, even though the number, we maintain the actual distance from the right-of-way line. But the length of it has changed and because of that, uh, we are exacerbating that variance slightly. And, uh, it would require new variance. And, uh, after discussions with New Jersey American Water, uh, they want us to put in a water meter vault, uh, that's a low ground structure. And that has to be within the front yard so that they can come read the meter. So those are the variances. Uh, one thing I do want to point out, and I'm going to refer to the front yard setback variant, that's to be, uh, with the resolution, but, uh, we're proposing eighty-seven feet. I did, uh, look at the other building, the area, and I do want to make it that the flats building that's, uh, just across King's Court from the north at the end of the cul-de-sac, uh, that will maybe go be approximately eighty-seven feet from the, uh, boundary line itself. So we aren't maintaining, um, the same similar setback as, uh, our neighboring properties. Now, to go through the justification of these variances, both of them stem as a result of new, uh, shape of this property. The property is not that angular, it's irregular shaped property where the, uh, the property line was new, uh, south. And then it jogs around the stream a little bit and then comes back up. It's got a circular area or a curve because of the cul-de-sac. And then it's relatively stream along King's Court and then it's got another curve. So the property is, uh, certainly not regularly shaped by any means. Uh, there's also some excessive, uh, coved graphic features on the property where it's sloped back. Um, for King's Court, it slopes from north down toward the south. Uh, there's a stream on the property and there's also some weapons. So, uh, there's some environmental constraints that, uh, make the rear of the property unusable, uh, not just by the DEP standard, but the township of Raritan also has advanced buffers that, uh, also restrict the use of the property. So the building's been located, the development's been located in an area where usable section of the property is. And, um, the, the development's been concentrated in this location. It can't, the lots actually were excessively wide and it's not very deep. So if this is a long, shallow height development and, uh, it has to be pushed closer to the road because, uh, we're restricted as to how far to the rear we can go. So that's certainly the, uh, the reason that the front yard setback was written. Uh, another reason, going back to the resolution, the board had found that, um, for lots that are less than five acres, you actually have a, uh, relaxed front yard setback standard. A hundred feet is what's required, but for lots less than five, uh, acres, it's relaxed. And most of the other lots in this area, including our property at the time with the application, before, before we merged it, we had two, uh, lots that were less than five acres. So if those properties had been developed by two separate owners, then people would see buildings on that street with, uh, smaller setbacks. And that's consistent with the other properties on King's Court. Because in that development, those properties are less than five acres. So, uh, by us merging them, the setback got greater, but that's certainly, that standard isn't what's, uh, that's, uh, common in this area. And you wouldn't notice the reduced setback either because. And you wouldn't notice the reduced setback either, because we, because of how long our property or wide our property is. There's no other properties on that side of the street. So if you were to come and look at Kingsport visually, you'd only see our building on that one side. So you wouldn't really have any perception that it was closer to the street than what was required by the zone. Because it's not like we have, the purpose of zoning is to have a uniform looking street. So if we had multiple buildings, then the conversation might be different. We have to fit in with what is on our side of the street. But since we're the only building, this setback is appropriate. And I think that the little extension we're proposing is a bit of a misin nature, and I think that the finding of fact in the original resolution still holds true today. And so that's the front yard setback. As far as the walls, the retaining walls themselves. Their location in the front yard as necessary due to the topography of property and photographic constraints. They have to start from that location. This site is graded by mid-year, so if it comes in, they're trying to go downhill as quickly as they can, we're accommodating the grade because the rear of the property is much lower than the front. However, you can only go down so much and still provide a safe traveling roadway for trucks coming in. And we have certain slopes and engineering standards that may change. And since it's not a very good site, we're not able to push everything back to build this long roadway and make a ramp down. We're at a very short distance to accommodate that slope. So we need to put some walls in in order to elevate the site so that it's higher in elevation and is accessible from Kingsport. So that's the reason that the walls are in the front yard is because for grading purposes, it's really the only alternative. And then that also leads to the rear, nine-foot walls are required because we're not allowed to disturb the bottom side of the wall. Our development is the high side of the wall. And we can't drop the site as much as we could, and there's a nine-foot difference, and it's really no way to make it go away. That's been approved. And then because the retaining wall is there, the grass wells are going to require some maintenance, we're going to have a landscaper there doing some maintenance work. And we don't want him to fall off the wall. So we're putting a fence there to, for safety protection, to protect the workers. And it's actually required by code. So when you add the nine-foot wall and the six-foot fence, we end up with fifteen feet. I did read the ordinance, and I'm not exactly sure as to why that's a variance, because in the ordinance, we were being asked to see, refers to the fence section. And nowhere in the ordinance does it say that you add together the height of the retaining wall and the fence. It just says, in a non-residential zone, you shall not have greater than an eight-foot fence. Well, we don't, we were proposing a six-foot fence. So I'm not sure that the variance is really required, but you know, as an abundance of caution, we did notice for it, and I think that if the board thinks it's necessary, that we can be granted under both the C one and the C two variance criteria. C one being hardship that I described in the necessity of law. And the C two being that is providing public safety, which is that goal number one of the municipal land use law, which furthered that goal. So we talked about those. As far as the other accessory structures in the front yard. Again, it was previously approved, grass well. I'm not sure that necessarily meets the definition. And as another one, I understand that the ordinance, it's calling things strictly. If you strictly interpret the ordinance, some of the items in the front yard can be considered accessory structures. I mean, it even goes on the same pavement, but when you read the section that says, this is no accessory structure shall be in front of a building, that's in the chart. And I would say that the intent of the ordinance meaning above-ground type structure, like a wall or things people can see. I don't think the ordinance was trying to limit detention basins or saying that you can't have a water meter in the front yard. I mean, the water meter is a simple utility. It can't be located anywhere else because that's for the water services, and the water company wants to be able to access the meter and read it. So I think that those variances can be granted, whether the water meter, it certainly be granted under the C one hardship criteria. Because that's the only place to get the water, and putting that meter somewhere else would be a much hardship. And the water company wouldn't approve the application on their end. As far as the underground detention system, that's the same thing. It's you have the slope of the land that's coming from north to south, that when you collect the water, it has to be stored in that location because there's really nowhere else to put it. And that'd be the same thing again. Let's say the slope, the site was sloped in the opposite direction, and the low point was the front yard. The ordinance would be prohibiting someone from putting drainage at the low point of this property. I really don't think that's what the ordinance was anticipating. I think it was trying to prevent you from putting a shed or some other statue or some kind of obstruction in front of your building. So I think with the new underground detention system, that variant could certainly be granted under the C one criteria. That's where it needs to be to accommodate the topography of the site. Same thing with the grass well. We need a grass well there in order to convey stormwater. It's just necessary as part of the engineering function. The other variance we had was this steep slope variance. The access to the project hasn't actually changed at all. And the steep slopes that you see in this area, they're not, they're man-made, they're not naturally occurring slopes. It's actually graded off at a perfect one-on-five or one-on-six, because that was the grading with the cul-de-sac. And when they put Kingsport in, the cul-de-sac, it had to go, and they needed to spill in a low spot there. So they graded it off, and they did push the dirt on our property, and that was the slope. So the intent of your steep slope ordinance is to protect natural areas and natural features. And what we have here is a slope. Yes, it meets the definition of a steep slope, but it's man-made, it's an embankment for a cul-de-sac. It has absolutely no environmental benefit whatsoever. So that could certainly be also granted under the C one barriers criteria. The hardship being that it's there, it's in the way of our access. And so that's the topography of the land, and we're accommodating the existing photographic features. And by not discovering that area, it would present undue hardship. It was previously approved. The structure setback, the natural features, in my opinion, the finding, nothing's changed there, so the finding of fact should still remain a fact. What was the setback?
That's the retaining wall, engineer's well.
Okay. Well, it's the same thing. It's located in that area. That was previously approved, and it's all the same reasons, it would be C one variant criteria. And then the last of it would be the waiver for I'm not sure I agree with the engineer. He said that according to the section in ordinance, only RCT pipes can be used for drainage. But I agree with the section in ordinance, it said minimum storm drain size shall be fifteen-inch reinforced concrete pipe. Corrosured metal pipe shall be fully coated with paint invert and shall be used outside roadway right away, right away. So I don't know how he's coming up with the fact that only RCT can be used, because it's talking about if you want to use CMP, you have to have a paint invert.
I think Mr. Ferrero has already met you with respect to that condition, right, Mr. Ferrero?
Yeah, I certainly have no issue with the plastic pipe in the detention system. As far as the collection system is concerned, it could be either both are acceptable. If we're on, in a municipal roadway, I would want the concrete pipe. But this is not a stormwater system that's
What do you think works here?
I'm sorry?
Do you think the waiver should be granted? What do you think works here?
I think, I think it works.
Okay.
We would ask for, yeah, either or.
Alright, so we're good on that.
Okay. We want to order from one place or? So I think all the variances. Project as a whole furthered goals of municipal land use law, promotes goal A, which encourages municipal action to guide appropriate use of development of all lands in the state in a manner of promoting public health, safety, world, and general welfare. So it's in the county's best interest to see the site developed and get a reasonable zone for this use, and it's a fully deforming use. Some of the variances we're asking for are safety issues, are our safety measures, like the false fence. If that's a variance. We are providing adequate air light and open space. We're providing appropriate densities and concentrations of uses in appropriate locations, since it's a permitted use, and we're promoting a desirable living environment. Building should be a nice modern working building, good-looking building when it's done. So that should satisfy all the positive criteria required for granting of the variances, the C two variances. And then as far as any negative criteria, we demonstrate that there's no substantial detriment to the intent and the purposes of the ordinance and the master plan. Certainly, I don't think that we have a significant detriment on the ordinance. I think that the ordinance is a strict interpretation of a lot of the various ethical variances. And the purpose of the ordinance, I did look at some of the purposes of it, we're actually furthering some of the purposes of the land use ordinance. Goal A is to further purposes set forth in municipal land use law, so I've already talked about purposes we're furthering there, so just that alone, we are furthering the purposes of your ordinance. And I think talks about some other things, about safe and efficient vehicular areas, appropriate screening, and preserving natural resources, so we are preserving natural resources here. So certainly, there's no substantial detriment to the ordinance. And I did look at the goal of the master plan, it's a permitted use, so there's no substantial detriment. And as far as the public, I don't see any either, because most of the variances are actually underground. So it will be well screened by the Caddo, and there's no public really around us. There's a baby P O T guard, there's a lot of wood back there. So the board does find that the bench and the wall combination is variance, and is well screened from the neighboring properties. I already just talked about Kingsport and what the visual impact would be, and there would be, but there's texture of thirty five feet. So I don't see any substantial detriment on the public.
Are there any questions for?
Hours of operation, what's allowed there? Is that planning, is that your? What's allowed? Oh, twenty percent, okay.
There's no precedent, it doesn't have to be.
The other question, I don't know who this is before. Trucks getting in and out, do you anticipate them, you know, going north to or to south? Where do they turn around? Where do they exit if they're going thirty one? You know, you're bringing traffic onto Morris Corner Road.
I don't imagine wanting to get tied up on Colony Road, that they're going to come up, Colony Road, two oh two, while they do their business. Use Kingsport and go back to two oh two. I would anticipate.
They're always going to enter from the north on two oh two and then exit heading south on two oh two? That's your assumption?
They're just
So even if they had to head north, they would end up making right, yeah.
Was your, did we ask the public, Dan, any questions?
No, we did not.
Are there any other questions for the board for this, the planner's testimony? Any questions from the, oh, go ahead, John.
The section of the retaining wall extended to the ground. And that's the old sort of above-ground structure. What's the, what's the maximum height of the wall in that front yard? That's the, that's the maximum height. I'm assuming it's papering, I'm just trying to
You're trying to visualize it.
Well, I can visualize it, but I'm just trying to clarify that you're not talking about anywhere near the nine-foot maximum height of the fence. It's papering probably in two blocks. It's a short presentation.
I just heard. At the curve of the wall, we just put the front yard setback line approximately where the curve started the wall. And then that forty of the wall, that's approximately six feet, six and a half feet.
Nine and a half feet over section here.
So the maximum, six, six point six feet, so six feet eight is the maximum height. And there, and there is proposed plantings on the exposed side of the wall. Is that correct?
Yeah.
If not, we'll make sure that there is.
I think it was testified earlier, showing on the prior plan, there were vegetation and plantings that were proposed under the prior concrete plan.
It's probably similar on the other side as well. What would be approximately feet on the other end? That side of the story in terms of visually, because the wall on the east side, potentially see from Colony Road as you enter on Kingsport. The wall on the left side, that's basically backwards of the woods. So even if you were making a huge deal on Kingsport, you wouldn't see it.
And while we were planning here, he's gonna lay the foundation for the traffic waiver.
Oh, yes.
Let me ask, let me ask you about that. It 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 said in in the old resolution. It says Judd Rossiola P E, this is number forty, the township traffic engineer and consultant submitted a report dated November sixteen, two thousand and five, which included the amount of the fair share contribution for the proposed traffic signal at Church Street and Royal Road intersection. The applicant will be required to pay the fair share contribution prior to the issuance of this certificate of occupancy to the first unit in the building. Are you seeking a waiver of that?
No, I I think it was more of like a submission waiver for submitting a traffic report.
Oh, a traffic.
An actual study.
Okay.
And the the reason we were asking for that is because we're uh reducing the building footprint by possibly five hundred and forty square feet and the overall square uh floor area of this building is being reduced by.
Okay.
Thirteen dollars.
Alright, so it didn't relate to that condition?
Correct, it's relating to number number two in the narrative that.
Okay.
Which is the middle item.
Alright, I was just looking at that, that you're still gonna do that and work that out with Jay Troutman.
Correct.
This is more, trying to say the traffic went down, so there's no.
Yeah, well, our traffic guy's not here, so that's obviously telling. When your traffic expert doesn't show up, it usually means he doesn't have any issues.
Yeah, so. So I think we're good on the on the uh traffic study, yes, the middle item.
I I assume the board is gonna grant that waiver, but I can never speak for the board.
Thank you. Um, any further questions for our? Thank you.
Any, one moment, any questions from the public? Get it on the record. Thank you.
Who do you have left?
I have a, I'd like to call up our architect. Um, Mr. Albo to, uh it was a good segue at the end with regard to how nice the building will look. It's a great segue to bring up our architect to describe and to also answer some of the um comments that were put in.
The the exhibits, you have three of them?
We have three of them.
If you could hold them up and give them to me for purposes of the resolution, I would appreciate that rather than taking them home.
Sure.
Thank you.
We're just gonna give them the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not a not a problem.
I thought that's enough, we don't call anymore witnesses. Wasn't there some tiny thing that we always had an?
Miss, Miss, Mr. Singer, you probably got what, another?
These are very short.
Right, because landscape architect's essentially gonna say he he agrees with Mr. Thomas's report and it will work with Mr. Thomas, right?
Yeah, and then you're. Lepine to number five in the environmental commission.
Right, and then the the architect is gonna be quick.
Answering ten to twelve uh common sense.
Okay, and then you'll sum up and we'll we're we're.
That's correct.
Alright. David Judge did hit homerun number sixty one if anyone's wondering.
So um, see, we should have, we should celebrate. Um, at this time, I'd like to um introduce our architect, Mr. Albo. Could you please uh tell the um board your educational experience?
Yeah, I studied architecture in Europe, in Romania. I finished the architecture school in nineteen seventy three. And I came to the United States in nineteen seventy eight, I obtained my license in nineteen eighty two. That's forty years. Many, many projects. Testified in front of many boards, last time was in South London, weeks ago. And uh I practice in many states.
Thank you. Um, I'd like at this time.
He's licensed in New Jersey still? Okay.
In in good stead.
Yeah, accepted as a.
Thank you.
My license number is eighty two seven.
You might wanna hold the mic a little closer.
Yeah.
There you go.
Um, I'm gonna turn your attention to um uh specifically the report from uh the township uh planner um that dated September twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. Um, and I'd like you to um to respond to to comments ten, eleven and twelve.
Yes, comment number ten is asking me about the architecture of the building. What is a metal building? Is a metal skin made out of eighteen inch wide panels with a concave in look. So there are areas, it is about two and a half inches. Uh the color of the building will be white. Uh the building will be, the aluminum frames of the windows and of the doors would be natural anodized aluminum. And the glass would be probably some kind of glass would have fifty percent opacity, it's for a solid glass mission. The meat energy. The building, uh metal panel has a polyester, is a siliconized polyester skin and would be arctic white, that's a typical manufacturers color. I don't have a sample here. Uh the panel is called the uh S seam lock twenty four, and I will submit a copy of it for director. As far as the facade of the building goes, uh it's for a for an industrial building, it's pretty, it's very complex. So it says a lot of entrances, windows, there's an upper row of windows, also the big light in the warehouse. Uh it it's 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 more than a typical warehouse. It it will look good, would not take anything away from the look of the town. Uh for it's 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 more, it could be anything else, not only a warehouse, it could be a school, it could be something very nice. Um, the building height is twenty two foot six inches. That very top of the building has like a ridge on the side elevation, you can see under the tilt, that's eleven inches higher. At the maximum. The color of the roof would be not white, would be galvanized, would be like a gray metal. It's a metal roof. So the gray metal roof would be the, one would put the, uh be seen only from the sky. In the rest of it, it doesn't appear. All the other features like cutters and leaders would be all white, the same color would blend into the skin of the building. As far as the signage of the building goes, this is another question, was um, we have, there's the identification signs above each entrance door. And then we are, we are proposing a sign area for every single tenant. So with that deadline, you can see if I will zoom in into this. I I showed this data, the twenty five foot long, four foot three inches high area where the sign could be. We don't know the signs, but this is the area when the sign could be. This detail shows here, this would be fourteen foot, six inches from the floor. And this, this is, this was arrived to by uh leading the ordinance, but it says that the facade area should be uh taken into account. The facade area seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventeen square feet, five percent of which is allowed to be dedicated to signage. That gives us the eight hundred eighty five square foot total signage area. I divided the eight. And each sign could be no more than hundred and ten square feet. And uh that sign which I showed there, twenty five by four foot three, that's hundred and seven square feet. And uh that would be uh it could be the largest area of a sign could be top of each address. Also, in the back of the building, we would uh install uh identification signs over this trucking entrance, the 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 main door for the tractors. So would have, would be the same sign like in the front, one, A, B, C, D, E, F. Basically, this is, these were the answers to the comments from the engineering.
Comment eleven, it's it's stating that if it one time per tenant, so given the scenario that there's point one unit per tenant, does the sign state the same?
Uh, no, it it would be, could be one single sign which the area of the sign would be uh eight hundred and eighty five square foot max.
So it's not, it's not gonna stay even?
No, no, no. Uh I tried to uh uh in envision uh the building being multi-tenant building. And this is the maximum number of signs. It would be one single sign, that would be eight hundred eighty five square foot. It would be two signs would be half. This is the maximum, the the busiest it could get. Yeah, so each single sign would be still look good at twenty five feet length, you know, from eighty foot from the state would be well visible, but would be not exaggerated.
I understand, but it's five percent of the tenant's base one side.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of of course, it would be a very large sign. Yeah, it would be like uh fifty feet by ten. That's five hundred.
Jeff, in the past, have our ordinance, typically, we've tried to get some uniform sizing over the.
Typically, if there's more than one tenant's base per tenant, if he, one of the signs that is permitted
So we don't have a.
So it's not.
A hodgepodge.
Yeah, well, that will be a condition of approval because a lot of boards require that the signs be presented in advance. In a sign package. So we're somewhat lenient in that we approve things without seeing seeing signs, and of course, they don't know who their tenants are, but a condition of approval will be to work with a township and board planner to make sure the signs are uniform.
Any questions for this witness?
Any questions from the public?
Let it be noted, there is no public here tonight or on on Zoom, so we we continue to ask for the public, but the transcript will reflect, there was no public that appeared tonight.
And I just wanna reiterate, I know we were talking about, you know, potentially eight, it could be five. We don't know how the building will be split, I wanted to reiterate.
Correct.
Thank you. You know, you can't wait. My last witness, um, Mr. Jim Mazuko.
And in fact, he was a landscape architect in two thousand and six, correct?
He was.
Okay.
Wow.
Would the board still accept him as an expert?
Yes.
Depends if his licenses are up to date.
How many people?
They are up to date.
Alright.
Alright. Thank you. Um, Mr. Mazuka.
Yes, sir.
Um, can you uh address the um, I think Candace addressed the the memo from uh Mr. Thomas, do you have anything to add? To Ms. Davis's?
No, I think she pretty much stated it perfectly, we'll we'll adhere to uh the previous approved application and also work with Mr. Morgan Thomas to uh to his satisfaction.
Could you address for the board um comment five of the previously identified uh environmental commission review?
Sure. Um, at this point, our our plant list consists of more than fifty percent native. And also, again, uh, Mr. Thomas has any objections to any planting we're proposing, we're certainly willing to work with him uh to adjust those as needed.
Are there any questions for this witness?
Anything from the board? Or Mr. Thomas? Been here so long.
And and I just wanted to, just for the record, uh, you did provide in this application which is something we had requested in our compliance report, you did provide uh a uh tree inventory to prove that the application complies with the tree protection ordinance, which wasn't in effect in two thousand and six. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that was what I think uh conservatively forty five percent tree clearance.
Correct.
And I say conservatively because, you know, this was a fairly, this was a, this was an open site.
Yeah, and then also, as as you pointed out too in our conversations, that majority of that new vegetation is also an invasive species. So we're also helping uh promote and and once we do the reforestation, promote a better forest habitat uh than what's there today.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for this witness? Thank you.
Any other witnesses?
Note for the witnesses.
Now, we, unlike prior council, would you like to summarize your application and state the the relief you're seeking in terms of variances and waivers, Mr. Singer?
I I would.
Well, thank you.
Um, thank you uh for your time this evening, first and foremost. I would like to submit this amended site plan be approved with the following um variances, design, and submittal item waivers. The uh the first one, um, which was written in our original um uh narrative was for the wetland analysis and report. Uh, we've updated that since we have all the approvals from the D E P, which uh if they haven't been, will be provided uh to the board. Uh, number two is again a submittal item waiver request for the traffic study and report as uh testified um by our experts as to the rationale behind the waiver for the traffic study. Number three is a variance for the front um setback. Number four is a variance for the structures in the front of the building. Number five is a variance for side side setback. Just to be specific, that has to do with the retaining wall, safety fence, um, the engineered grass swell and the the guide rail. Next is the uh variance for the hundred foot structure setback uh to natural features. Also, um, as you've stated, for the safety fence, the engineered grass swell and the guide rail to the top of the bank. Uh, next is, um, should the board deem it necessary, a request for a variance for the height of the fence um for non-residential use. Next would be a variance for the hard surface coverage within the steep slope areas. Again, there was no change from the prior approval, however, um, the variance has been requested um in review of this amended site plan, so we request that variance. And lastly, as testified by Ms. Davis, uh the design waivers for the stormwater management system again um as previously approved by the board. Um, actually, last, I almost forgot, it's not in my notes, um, is the uh waiver that we discussed for the R C P piping, um, that was thoroughly discussed at this meeting with the um township engineer.
And also, just to clarify, um, Mr. Vacarella had pointed out in his report number five that uh there was C variance relief required for a proposed ten foot high safety gate near the snow disposal, snow disposal area, and you've indicated that that um will not exceed eight feet uh in height, so that variance is no longer required, correct?
We think the confusion was it's ten foot wide.
Right, and some of the conditions I I I think that are applicable, um, most recently, if if approved, the applicant will work with Mr. Vacarella on the sign package. Um, we'll work with Mr. Ferrero on the design of the outdoor uh storage enclosure, obviously, we'll work with Mr. Thomas with respect to um landscaping. Um, and we'll confer with uh Jay Troutman, our traffic engineer, with respect to any required uh contribution as noted in the prior resolution and will continue with respect to this one. I think I've covered them all.
Those are correct.
If I haven't, the transcript will will correct me. Um, should I sum up the, um, council has adequately summed up the variances and waivers sought. You have heard testimony with respect from the applicant's professional engineer, the variance relief is sought under both C one and C two. Uh, C two is the uh general variance where it's a general benefit to the community, uh as said. As set forth in the seminal New Jersey Supreme case of Kaufman versus Warren Township, that dates back to nineteen eighty eight. And of course, we're all familiar that in terms of variance relief, uh, there must be, um, the applicant meeting the burden of showing positive criteria. In this particular instance, the planner has suggested and offered his opinion to the board that under section two of the municipal land use law, uh, there are several items that, uh. These variance relief will satisfy the positive criteria. The negative require, the negative criteria requires that there be no substantial detriment to the zoning ordinance and master plan. I emphasize, as I always do, that it has to be substantial detriment, that de minimis or insignificant detriment does not necessarily mean the variances should not be granted. This is a, a site plan application amended, uh, site plan, and essentially, that is the application report of the board tonight. Oh, and last but not least, the applicant has represented that only warehouse use will be, um. Permitted, and then if any other type used beyond warehouse use is required in the future from tenants, that the applicant will appear before the zoning board of adjustment, and that will so be noted. That's it.
Also, they also said they would grade the snow disposal area so that it does not run off into the stream.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that our engineer will look at the, our new engineer will look at the technical requirements of.
Alright.
Our former engineers' report to make sure.
Yes, that compliance has been had, and that's the March twenty sixth, twenty twenty one report.
Thank you. Alright, any discussion? Would anyone like to offer a resolution for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve as summarized, to, to approve the application as testified, per testimony, but to pursuant to the conditions summarized by the applicant's attorney and Mr. Valarda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please. And vice chairwoman, Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yeah.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Cavalcir.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Thank you, and I want to suggest to the applicant that their counsel adequately and excellently represented them tonight. The witnesses were well prepared, it was a, a fine presentation. We often at times have attorneys that don't quite meet that, that high bar, so, um, thank you, Mr. Singer, thank you, thank you for the compliment.
Alright.
Yeah, sorry, I lost my.
Thank you, appreciate it, nice meeting you.
Alright, we have a few more agenda items. Uh, uh, item number eight, we have no resolutions before the board tonight. Are there any correspondents, Jeff?